Moving to 1.07, Report of Closed Session. The Board of Education met in closed session on February 3rd and 10th, 2022 for the purpose of a discussion of personnel agenda items. Moving to 1.08, Public Comments. I have one public comment from Debbie Weisler. You have five minutes if you're ready to come up. There you are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Students have been in person at school for 14 months. They have finally been given a personal choice about masking. Spring sports are in full swing and many events and activities are happening as they would have back in 2019. Hopefully tonight you will approve the Rittner Return to Learning Plan, which allows parents and visitors back into school buildings. This is key to parental involvement in schools and has been denied for two years. St. Louis County restrictions have ended, COVID cases continue to decline, and this surely will become a slow start to improve everyone's mental health in great ways. As a nurse, I am most interested in and passionate about our health, which is something I believe has been greatly distorted through the pandemic. We've lost the discussion about what actually is personal health. Wearing a mask does not make you healthy. Someone wearing a mask does not change the health of anyone in their room. A vaccine does not make anyone healthy. A person's health has to do with their daily decisions about how they live their life, what they eat, and how physically active they are. That is what determines a person's health. My personal choices cannot make another person healthier. Your own personal health decisions are your responsibility and determine your degree of health. I hope that our district moves away from the reactionary decision-making that has taken over. We need to focus on proactive education in mental and physical health. As board members, you are responsible for the education of the community. Again, I encourage you to focus on students and staff members' health and well-being in better ways than just by supporting a vaccine clinic and increasing room sanitation. You must also stress physical activity, proper nutrition, stress management, mindfulness, good sleep habits, and time outdoors. Practicing these health habits will lead to a decrease in chronic disease, which will lower people's risk of frequent illness. The number of high school students involved in sports and activities has declined the past two years. More resources need to be focused on increasing student involvement. After-school transportation is not offered at the high school. Couldn't this help students become more involved? You can also focus on better nutrition in the cafeteria. Providing free breakfast and lunch to students is outstanding, but the quality is also important. Providing foods that not only meet nutritional recommendation, but options that students will actually eat. I know that's not a small task, but is definitely one worth pursuing. You could get the culinary class involved in suggesting and testing menu items. I know we can do better when it comes to food choices at school. It may seem overwhelming to make these changes to promote some basic health habits that I mentioned, but if you truly are concerned about a student's health and well-being, you must start somewhere. I pray we will never see another pandemic like the coronavirus in our lifetime, but there are no guarantees. Please spend time talking to each other, do some self-reflection, and begin making proactive changes for students' health so that if there is a next time, students won't have to suffer as much as they did the past two years. At the end of the Return to Learning meeting on Tuesday, Dr. Kilbride talked about the graduation menu. Thankfully, Shavitz Arena has ended their COVID protocols. However, Dr. Kilbride mentioned Rittner's solution to the problem of vaccine requirement or providing a negative test was to host a testing clinic on June 2nd to make sure everyone had the chance to get tested if needed to attend graduation. That was the solution. Dr. Kilbride was asked if there was a discussion about changing venues. He said no, families could watch graduation on livestream if they couldn't attend. Board members, are you okay with requiring a medical test for healthy, symptom-free students to attend their own graduation? After all these seniors have had to endure the past two years, do you want the possibility of some students not being welcomed to their own graduation? There are students and families that have moral and ethical objections to requiring COVID testing of healthy, symptom-free individuals. To me, it sounds like discrimination, and I would hope our district can do better moving forward when making big decisions like this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I don't believe we have any other public comments. And we can move to the reports. 2.01, President's Report. Rittner students and staff celebrated Black History Month with a variety of classroom and school-based activities throughout the month of February. The Game Changers at Rittner High School began Black History Month by celebrating Black Excellence with inspirational posters that students and staff could enjoy in and around the cafeteria. Throughout February, the 30-member Game Changers organization led by seniors Tess Costa and Azariah Z. Estes highlighted all aspects of Black history and locally Black-owned businesses. In addition to posters, students and staff were treated to weekly presentations that highlighted Black women activists, athletes, inventors, traditions, and celebrations. A special culminating video at the end of the month featured Black educators who inspired greatness in their students. Other Rittner schools had classroom decorating contests that spotlighted famous Black scientists, authors, athletes, civic leaders, and changemakers. Schools also included special morning announcements that increased awareness and appreciation of Black excellence and history. Throughout the month, students in all grade levels participated in projects that broaden their knowledge about influential African-Americans. We are so proud of our students, staff members, and our schools, and excited that we could share details about our Black History Month celebrations with you tonight. Moving to 2.02, Dr. Kilbride Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. So, board members, this week, we celebrate Missouri School Board Recognition Week, started on March 6th, and it continues through this Saturday, the 12th of March. Board members, tonight, it's my personal honor to thank every one of you. This community benefits from your leadership, from your focus on every student, every day, for navigating this district through the toughest time in my educational career. I know that many of you have more experience in education than I do in your years of service on this board, as well as the experience with your children. It's my honor to say thank you to every one of you for supporting the community, supporting me, pushing me to be better in the best interest of every student in the district. During School Board Recognition Week, communities across Missouri honor the dedicated service of local boards of education. As we heard in Jefferson City on Monday, the best decisions for kids are decisions that are made at the local level, and I'm honored to serve with every one of you in making those local decisions. The goal of this week is to build awareness and understanding of the important function of an elected board in providing leadership for the community and for every one of our schools in the district. So, on behalf of the MSBA, I've got a certificate that I'll be handing out to each of you, and the certificate reads, "MSBA proudly recognizes members of the Rittner Board of Education for their dedicated leadership in public education and for continued service to the children of this community." Signed by Nancy Masterson, who's the current president, as well as by Melissa Randolph, the executive director. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. We'll have to push the MSB on the student representative recognition. Thank you, Janine.
She is a game changer.
She'll get on him.
She'll get changed. I don't know about that.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kilbride. Moving to 2.03, Legislative Advocacy Committee Report. Dr. Kilbride.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Allen Wilson. So, board members, thank you to everyone who was able to travel to Jefferson City this past Monday for the MSBA Legislative Advocacy Day. We were able to check in with a number of our elected officials, our representatives, as well as our senators. Busy day, busy time down in Jefferson City. We were able to connect with our elected officials around the Open Enrollment Bill, around charter funding, the number of bills that are around charter funding, as well as the bill has to do with the elimination of personal property tax in St. Charles County. The elimination of the personal property tax in St. Charles County, if that should spread to other counties across the state, if it should spread to St. Louis County, that will be a significant issue for the Rittner School District as personal property tax, specifically the tax on the fleets of rental cars along the Rock Road, is a significant driver of revenue here in the district. So, all the board members, as well as I, had the chance to lift up our voice, to share our perspective, and as always, do feel that we're very much heard by our elected officials.
You mean along Natural Bridge, not the Rock Road?
I mean, yes, along Natural Bridge, I'm sorry. Right next to the airport.
Some people don't know that that's our area.
So, also, board members, the next meeting of the Legislative Advocacy Committee, it's going to be a week from tomorrow, so it's Friday, the 18th of March, at 7:30 in this room. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kilbride. Moving to 2.04, MSBA Report. Dr. Thomas.
All right. Well, as usual, we're going to start with our video and go from there. Maestro.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of March. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the importance of advocacy on the state level. It's critical that board members and superintendents communicate frequently with state legislators about the impact of proposed legislation in your school district. One example of such advocacy work occurred recently when a group of parents and school board members from St. Louis Public Schools visited the Capitol in Jefferson City. One of those making the trip was Emily Kelso, a parent and chair of the St. Louis Parent Action Council.
There are a lot of us who choose to send our students to St. Louis Public Schools and are proud to do so, and are willing to come here on our own time, with no compensation, and say, you know, we are proud of our schools, we choose SLPs, and we want to see the legislature here invest in our students.
Another parent, Gloria Holland, says it's important to be an advocate for all children.
We have to be an advocate for children across the district. And so, when I think about it, I'm advocating for the children that don't live in my house, that don't have a mom that might show up to something and might not know all of, you know, how they can express themselves. So, I can be that voice, and I promise to do it. I promised myself that I would do it.
The St. Louis School Board also has formed a Legislative Advocacy Committee aimed at having a greater impact on legislation being considered in Jefferson City. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, our Twitter feed with up-to-the-minute developments, through critical issue alerts, and periodic webinars. Missouri has its first-ever national superintendent of the year. He is Dr. Curtis Kane, superintendent of the Wentzville School District. The award was announced at the recent American Association of School Administrators Conference in Nashville. Dr. Kane says, "School boards and superintendents working as a team can benefit the educational opportunities available to students," and he says that's especially true in the current environment.
The ability for school boards and superintendents to effectively work together has always been important, but now, I believe with all the questions, the comments, the criticism, the concerns that school districts are facing, it is more important, more now than ever before, that these two parties work in tandem to support students and their success.
Dr. Kane made those comments during the recent MSBA Annual Conference held in Kansas City, where he was named Missouri's Superintendent of the Year. MSBA's spring regional meetings begin later this month and continue through April. This year's round of meetings will feature presentations from school districts in the region. You'll also have the opportunity to network, share ideas with your colleagues from other districts in your area, and learn more about current issues in public education. You can register for the spring regional meeting in your area through the MSBA website. MSBA's Future Builders Foundation is now accepting applications for the 2022 Early Childhood Education Program of the Year awards. There will be three awards for exemplary early childhood education programs based on school district size. Applications will be judged by the Future Builders Board of Directors. The deadline for submitting an application is April 4th. The awards will be presented at the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City. Application information is available on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Along with that, Brett did mention that we have regional meetings coming up. You should have gotten an email today or yesterday about Region 7's meeting that's up in Riverview Gardens. You might note that St. Louis Public Schools has been able to be a presenter there, along with...
Us.
Rittner. We're going to talk about the International Welcome Center there. So, I'd encourage everyone to go. It's always a good meeting. It's good to see other board members in the region and other superintendents as well. There's a lot of superintendents there that we know. Along with, at the first weekend of April, we'll be heading out to the National School Board Association, where we can further our education on national issues and go to different sessions so that we can learn new and different things from school districts across the country. You might run into some people there you know, and there's always good speakers at the general sessions. So, I encourage everyone that can go to go to that as well. It's our ongoing way of keeping up and learning and our continuing education for board members. I know there's a lot of different things that we could go to, but I think these two would help each board member a lot, furthering our education and knowledge. And with that, Madam President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Moving to 2.05, Special School District Report. Mrs. Ruth Belgreco.
No, I'm not doing it tonight. Penny's doing it. She's the one who attended my... Since I was at the Jefferson City trip, and Rob of Doot.
Okay, and Rob can do the presentation. Absolutely, Mr. Eaton, good to see you.
I was, but I don't think I should make a report. It's already in there.
Is that the presentation?
I need speaking.
Well, we'll hand it to Rob.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you going to try to do your back portion?
Sure.
Go ahead. Oh, is this my part?
Get that reversed.
Which one do I do? Everyone's mad at this.
That's not like my one at home, you know? This one?
Yeah.
All right. So, our mission is to support and empower students of all learning abilities to excel to their greatest potential, and our vision is every student realizes their full potential in life and learning. The core values of the Special School District is equity, every student regardless of learning ability or socioeconomic status deserves access to the services they need to succeed, commitment. Everything we do revolves around our commitment to students and their success and collaboration. We work with parents, students, partners, districts, and the community to benefit students, and this, of course, very well fits with what we do here as our core values. Business meeting that was held on Monday, 15... There actually might have been more districts represented, but we had to present both Rob Eaton and Penny attended. Not I. I thought Penny was giving this, so that's why I left I in here. Agenda minutes were approved. There were no public comments in the PACT Parents Advocacy Committee, which is what Rob gave the report, so you can go ahead if you want to do that. Or do we just finish?
Go ahead and do yours.
All right. Public Review Committee, which a report was given by the co-chairs, Ms. Keisha Lee and Mr. Larry Felton. They were two nominees for the Dr. Carter Award Award Monday when we were up there, and actually, Mr. Larry Felton won that award, so it was... You can see why they are co-chairs, they're very good at what they do. An explanation of mandates was given regarding the state statute, and then there was a list of committee members and update on their progress today. At the business meeting, they approved the revised FY '22 budget, which included the changes made in November, and then there was election for the Special School District Board of Educators. There are two seats open, Sub-District 3, which is Parkway, Viscavy, Potroff, won that one, and Sub-District 4, which includes Fert floor, Pattonville, Riverview Gardens, Mr. Scott Mulder took that one. And our next meeting will be Monday, June 6th. You have any questions?
What I have?
Are you, buddy? Oh, did I do wrong? You have a thing, don't you? Yes, I do. Okay, there we go.
All right. So, since Penny was not feeling good Monday night, I took some extra notes and was planning on digging into some of that stuff so that she wasn't feeling good. So, with the Rittner vision of, in partnership with our parents and community, and developing leaders, recognize faculty with excellence, produce graduates who will become productive citizens and lead lives of personal integrity and fulfillment, to me, that vision jumps out very much so when you're talking Special School District, and we make sure that those students are involved every day and not looked at as somebody with a disability, but looked at as our children, as our future. The mission of Rittner School District is to ensure the learning occurs in a supportive environment that enables every student to think critically, solve problems, and develop the nitrogen skills necessary for success in our diverse global society. I'm just going to pick the one portion of the equity statement that jumps out, is that resources are allocated so that every student gets what they need. So, the Governing Council meeting on Monday night, the agenda was, we started with PACT updates, the PRC Committee, as Ms. Belgreco has already said, the Budget Workshop, and then the SSD Board of Elections. So, PACT report, some of the things that we're hearing from the PACT for Special School District is from other boards, talking about how do we get involvement in our schools? Right now, we only have 15 of the 22 partnering districts have PACs in their districts. That is a great opportunity that we're finding even in our own district, that we're able to take this information and get it to our parents and help kind of educate them, but not only to give them the resources and the tools to better their child's life. Then you're not, so many times, when you're sitting in a IEP meeting or a 504, you want to pull your hair out because you are confused, you're lost, and we're putting those resources in their hands ahead of time. The PRC report is a very detailed process. It's very overwhelming at times. When we talked about PRC, and they asked me if I would sit on that committee, they said it takes a lot of hours. That was an understatement.
What they do to govern?
A lot of hours.
Oh, yeah.
They just use a lot. They don't give a number. So, pursuant to Section 162.85A, the revised statute of Missouri, the PRC is made up of the following groups. There's three DESI appointees, that would be Dr. Andrew Stewart, Dr. Jenny Bender, and Dr. Mary Antisians. And then there are three Governing Council members. You would have Larry Felton from Melville, Keisha Lee from Ladoo, and Sheila Powell Walker from Ferguson floor. The statute... I'm sorry. And then you have the three PACT members. That would be Dr. Carter, which is the PACT president, myself, the vice president, and then one other parent has stepped up, Ms. Erica from Normandy. So, the statute specifically sets forth the mandates and the duties that the PRC is to do. It's not like we just get to go in and start saying, "Show us this, show us that." They tell us right up front what all we have to look at. We have to look at the structure, the governance, the administration, financial management, delivery of services, cooperation with component school districts, districts' roles as an advocate for special needs and severely special needs children. Just light reading. And you have to stay in compliance with Section 162.850 and 162.859. So, PACT met on September the 20th, October the 4th, and October... I'm sorry, PRC, on the 20th, the 4th, and the 20th, and October 20th, where we planned and looked at what reports we wanted from SSD and how we were going to start breaking it down. November 15th, we had a presentation for the SSD C-SIP, which is changing this year, from Dr. Molly Bolton, and the SSD partnership agreement given by Ms. Chiquita McRiddle. On the 29th, we looked at the Equity Framework for SSD by Dr. Michael Macklin, and then the Career Technical Education and Adult Education by Kevin Monart. Now, at that one, I also went back and said, "Great, you're telling us a whole bunch of information about the tech schools, and those are our general ed students in most cases that are going to those. What processes and that are we putting in place for our students with IEPs that are a little bit more challenged?" So, we did come back later on and had another presentation that explained the VSP program and how the community programs for our more challenged SSD students. On November 30th and December 9th, we toured North Tech, Northview High, and Akramin School. We went in two different groups. December the 7th, we had an employee engagement presentation by Ms. Jennifer Hendry and a Human Resources presentation by Dr. Dan Kelly. January 3rd, we had compliance presentation by Ms. Jennifer Hendry, and then the Parent Education and Diversity Awareness, PETA, which is no longer PETA as of due to Tuesday's board meeting. It's now the Family Life Something. Two different groups have combined by Ms. Latrice Morgan. January 12th, we met with the PACT, filled with questions and concerns from parents. January 31st, we had a presentation on the impact of the pandemic by Ms. Wendy Pendergrass. February the 8th, we met with the SSD Board of Education. February the 23rd, we had a budget presentation by Dr. Jeff Hogg. And February 25th, we met with the SSD Regional Superintendents. March the 7th, we met with the Governing Council. March the 15th, we will meet to discuss the next steps and start our reports. From now on, after March 15th, we will meet on a weekly basis from now through June to put together all the reports and make our recommendations. The Budget Report that was given by Dr. Jeff Hogg on March the 7th, March 15th... I did that. I did that right. So, some of the things, I would just give update on the Budget Report for SSD is Special School District worked to realign their budget. They go each year and zero out their budget so that they are not... The budget doesn't drive the needs of the teachers, that the teachers and their needs drive their budget. So, they clear it all out, start over. This year, they are expecting, it's not a reassessment year, and there's a $2 to $3 million local revenue increase is what they're expecting to see. So, when they looked at that, then they also had to go back, and if you have any questions on the next comment I'm going to say, you have to talk to Mr. Dwight, because I had to call him and get help, and even I'm still confused. They have to give a portion of that money back because of a lawsuit, Lincolnship versus Franklin County, where you can only take a portion of the tax levy, and when prices, the revenues go up, then you have to lower, and they still took, so they had to give back. You want more than that, talk to Mr. Dwight. I'm just going to throw that one over there. So, then you have the Tier 2 districts, so they take their $568 million for $568,000 that is disproportionate, and then they separate that out by Tier 2 and Tier 3. Tier 2 and Tier 3, in the disproportionality, they have to do it at 15%.
The districts.
The districts, correct. Tier 2 districts for the 22 partnering districts would be Ferguson floor, St. Hazelwood, Jennings, Kirkwood, Melville, Normandy, Parkway, Rittner, Rockwood, Riverview Gardens, and University City. That shows you just very quickly the disproportionality projections. I know it's hard to read. This year, with the help of Ms. Angie Faust, we were able to gain one extra pair of... Was it pair of... No, I'm sorry, interventionists, and two new social workers. And we still have some money that she could play with if she needed to. Just don't tell Mr. Hogg I told you that. Tier 3 high-needs districts, then they go in and add additional resources for them. The PACT met on 2/28 with presentations from PETA and Wendy Pendergrass report regarding... The Rittner PACT met on 2/28 with presentation from PETA and Ms. Pendergrass regarding our summer programs, so that we're sure that we're getting all of our SSD students the resources that they need, because summer programs fill up fast. I was excited to hear this year that if a student in an SSD doesn't qualify for ESY, then there is still summer school being offered through Rittner, being taught by SSD teachers. So, we're still able to meet all of the students' needs this year.
With the ESY?
Extended school year, ESY.
There is ESY, but we're also providing some teachers to support through Rittner summer school programs.
Right. So, if they don't qualify, there's certain restrictions of that, and they have to qualify through ESY, but we can still get them into the Rittner Summer School and the other programs. One of the concerns from the PACT was the fact of getting support from the boards and from the administration. from the boards and from the administration in creating PACs. I do want to say thank you to Dr. Kilbride, Ms. Julie Han, and Ms. Angie Faust for all of your support in our PAC here and doing whatever we needed. If I need something, I can call, and they're jumping to help move things around and be sure that we're meeting those resources and getting our parents brought in. Doug's office has done great in getting text blasts out and reminders. This time, we had, I almost want to say we had more on Zoom than we had in the building at our last meeting. So we were still using both of those avenues in our PAC meetings. And then definitely not least, but thank you to the Board of Education for your support in allowing us to bring those resources into our district and help those parents. Our next meeting will be March the 28th at 6 o'clock. Now, I'm going to personally invite every board member to join us on that one, on that one. It is something that excites me to know when, and they hate me on the PRC committee because I am pushing for this to come out faster than they like to see it. But it's moving away from some of their other planning, and it's doing something called charting the life course. And it helps for us to, for our SSD students to create a plan for the future. It's not looking, what is tomorrow hold? We're talking long-term, down the road, work. We're talking, you know, careers, things like that. And the charting the life course, we have, I have taken several times, and it's great because you don't have to use it in just that application. You can take charting the life course and say, okay, I want to, how am I going to help? Michelle could use it and say, how am I going to help down the road when I decide to retire? And how am I going to put these pieces in place? And you can use it in a lot of different ways. So it's a great resource, not only for SSD and looking at the future, but in every day. Debbie Fiasco says she uses it in all of her team meetings, and it's been very good at keeping it on track. So for 2022-23, some of our plans to grow the PAC is, I'm trying to get into PTOs. One of the thoughts I had was working with communications to see if we could put out the back-to-school information, get flyers put out, kind of have things pre-planned, and out in all of the back-to-school packets and things like that. Possibly looking at doing some kind of little infomercial for our SSD families. Just something to get it out there and ask that the board, when you meet different people, different things, that you're sharing that information also. So that is all I have, unless you have questions for, any questions for us?
So you were saying about, sorry. So you were saying about bringing in people and getting more people involved in it and everything. So do we have information available so like when new families come in to register for the school that they can know about the PAC and that they can get involved?
That is one of the things that we're looking at for now, but also for next year, is being sure that that stuff is put together. Right now, we don't have anything that we're handing in registration packets or anything like that, but that is something we're looking forward to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, we need to thank him because he sure does work hard.
All right. Moving to our business items, 3.01, return to learning plan approval. Dr. Chris Kilbride.
Somebody take the clicker. Thank you. Well, good evening, board members. I'm here to you tonight, I'm here tonight to report to you on the return to learning plan and make some recommendations. And as you remember, every 30 days, locally elected officials, a local elected school board has to approve and reapprove a return to learning plan that governs our strategies that we have in place to maintain the health and safety of students and staff. So I'm happy to report that the COVID data is continuing to move in the right direction. You know, we monitor positivity rate. St. Louis County positivity rate as of yesterday was down to 4.3%. A month ago, we were up near 20%, so very excited to share that. Based on the data, a number of people are confident to go maskless inside spaces in the district, although there are still a number of staff, a number of students, and a number of adults that choose to wear a mask. We do keep the dashboard updated. It's updated every Friday afternoon. It's a partnership between the Human Resources Department and Student Services. And you can see across the district, as of last Friday, we had one positive staff member district-wide. We had five positive students district-wide. This is a reminder that the pandemic is still with us, but with this low level of spread, we believe that we can take more aggressive steps to remove some of the restrictions that we've had in place for a number of days, weeks, and months. So in addition to positive cases, we also do have a total of three students that are isolated. If you remember, we moved away from quarantines to isolations of students and staff when they are symptomatic. So some recent changes to the plan. We moved to isolating symptomatic and positive persons. This was on the 18th of January. At that meeting also, on the 18th of January, it was actually the meeting just prior to that, took effect on the 18th of January, we adopted the updated CDC process, which is to move from 10 days to five. And then when someone is positive, from 10 days of isolation to five days. And then days six through 10, masking is required, although people no longer have to be isolated. A look back, on the 22nd of February, we moved away from mandatory masking to mask recommended. This was in place in all buildings in the district. We had set a metric that we had been looking at and we had been monitoring. And as of that Friday, which I believe was the 25th of February, St. Louis County had fallen below 7% positivity rate. So we were monitoring the metric previously. The decision was to go mask recommended effective the 22nd of February. It was just kind of interesting how those two things were pretty close in terms of when they came together. The decision on the 22nd of February also, we're mask recommended, but if we have a building that's at a 2% positivity rate, then a building would return to mask mandatory for a period not less than two weeks. The purpose of that is to try to reduce the spread when there is an outbreak in a building. And at this point, now that we're mask recommended, we are no longer in a position where there is a district-wide mandate. It is now building by building. Also, at the meeting that was on February 11th, we eliminated the restrictions on spectators at athletics and activities. That was in place for a month because we saw a significant spike December into January. I have three recommendations for your consideration this evening. These recommendations were shared with the return to learning committee on Tuesday. You'll see there was significant support amongst the committee for these three recommendations. The first recommendation, recommended change to the return to learning plan is, as was shared previously by Ms. Weissler, about allowing visitors, volunteers, parents, and also outside groups back into buildings. The ability of outside groups to use our spaces, to rent our spaces, it's been eliminated since the start of the pandemic. And board members, just a quick reminder, March 17th of 2020 was the first day that we announced the school shutdown. So we're one week shy of two years from that date. Just prior to that, I was in a conference room in Executive Page's office on a Sunday with a small group talking through what this pandemic was going to look like. So the recommendation to you tonight is to allow outside groups to again allow them into our buildings for meetings and also for rentals. This can be groups such as ABC in the evening. This could be PTO groups, allowing them back into the buildings. Generally, these meetings take place in the evening after the school day. If you approve this tonight, this would go into effect tomorrow. The feedback from the committee on Tuesday, you can see of the members of the committee that shared feedback, there was strong support for this recommendation. Also, starting with the beginning of the pandemic from nearly two years ago, visitors and volunteers were not allowed to go beyond the offices and buildings in the name of attempting to keep people as safe as possible. Given the reduction in spread, given the low number of cases that we have in the district right now, we believe that we can eliminate this strategy, again, welcome visitors and volunteers into the building. This would be coordinated through school and district offices. If you approve this recommendation tonight, this would go into effect tomorrow. You can see also strong support from the committee for this recommendation. Third recommendation has to do with our buses. We, even though we're mask recommended, we've been mask mandatory on our buses. CDC changed their guidance. There's also the expiration of the Federal Transit Authority, Federal Transportation Authority mandate that's expiring. So even though we were mask recommended in buildings, we're mask mandatory on buses. We're recommending that we go mask recommended on buses also. This would take effect on the 14th of March. We worked through Brian Sankar to connect with bus drivers to get their feedback on this recommendation, as well as when should we transition to this? A lot of the bus drivers are welcoming this change. It has been a challenge to maintain masks on buses. A number of them were welcoming it. And then the question was, at what point would we then make the transition? We would need tomorrow, if you approve this tonight, we need tomorrow to communicate this to families, to students. This would take effect on Monday, the 14th of March. The feedback from the committee also, a pretty straightforward, strong support for this recommendation as well. And so, board members, those are the three recommendations that are made to you tonight for your consideration. Can answer any questions, Michael?
I don't think we have any questions. Do you?
I just have a question. So I don't know what the policy was before for visitors as far as like, I mean, if they're sick or showing symptoms of anything. Are we going to have some sort of policy around that just to ensure that nobody does come in and is positive?
Yeah, we don't have, there's not the expectation that a person would show a negative test or vaccination status. That's not the recommendation at all. You know, the expectation is around, you know, responsibility and monitoring symptoms and having those conversations with the building staff, with the building leaders.
So I'm assuming that we still, for visitors, we would still have to do the volunteer forms and background checks depending upon the extent of the involvement that the person had in the school.
Right. Board members, if you remember, you approved a change in policy going back some years, where there are now two levels. And so a number of the programs that require volunteers have been discontinued. The best example is the Rittner Reading Railroad that placed a large number of reading tutors into our buildings. We would work to be restarting those programs, and they would. A number of the volunteers would have to go through our HR department to complete the background checks.
Madam President, I move that we approve the return to learning plan as presented this evening.
Second.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Belbreko?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Enriquez Pimbut?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
We'll move to 3.02, teacher contract, salary schedule approval. Dr. Michael Chance and Mrs. Amy Metz.
Oh, no, I'm going to be like, I don't know how to work this.
Good evening. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be here to present the teacher agreement and salary benefits effort. Would you believe that this effort does align for equity statements specifically resources allocated so that every student gets what they need? We've heard that a few times tonight. And that also means compensating our staff as best we can to recruit and retain highest-quality staff for our students, which ultimately is our teaching force that is number one in driving our vision and mission of our school district with everyone else working towards students and teachers.
So recognition of teams. We had a small but mighty team this year. So Dwight and Dr. LeChance. And then on my team, along with me, were Christina Mally, who is here, and then Adam Barnstead, who has wanted to be here. He's here in spirit. He is at his children's parent-teacher conferences tonight. So we did reach a tentative agreement after our first day, long day, but first day of talks together. So that was on Friday, February 18th. And it was a good day.
It was a good day. If you may recall, that was an AMI day. It was a snow day, AMI day. We took that opportunity to actually, we made it in, in person. We met in here. I think we finished up above quarter of seven.
I'm sure it was after seven.
A little bit after 7:00 PM, but it was a productive day.
Okay. So for the salary increases, so we're still using an index schedule that we thankfully received a few negotiation cycles ago. So the starting salary will be $44,452. So that's an overall increase to the entire schedule of 5.01%. And then any teacher that's eligible to move a step on the schedule will move a step on the schedule. So the retirement incentive that you all approved two cycles ago is expanding. So right now, there is a maximum benefit of $9,000 upon retirement, from a full retirement from the district after these 10 years of employment. That's with a full sick leave bank. So the amounts per day in that bank have increased, so the full benefit now would be $10,950. Do you guys want me to go through the small print?
We have found that that has encouraged our teachers to notify us earlier, as we saw this year, for retirement, which has really helped us in terms of recruitment during the peak hiring season. That was very beneficial this year.
Yeah, that's the reason we need to just talk about it because we have to be able to get the teachers, the best teachers out there for the crop.
Another subtle thing we did is we changed it from an hourly, an hourly to a daily, you know, incentive there. And that's just easier for the teachers to multiply out what their incentive will be instead of this hourly piece, which was kind of ambiguous.
Yes.
And just an FYI, when I first got on the board, we had a lot of-- Every year, we were trying to hire people, and they would only stay for like two or three years at the max. We were just like, we wound up being like a training center so they could move on to other places. So we had to do a lot of changes, and that's important.
Absolutely. I tell every person that I'm offering position for that we look to hire through retire. That's really what we're trying to do in the 20 years. It's a great place to be.
Really, the biggest shared interest that we have when we come together at the table is retention, is keeping our good teachers here. And so the ultimate goal of many of these things is to keep people here. So the attendance incentive that is there would also be changing to be a bit more attractive. So right now, there is a year-end incentive. So we are moving that to a semestral incentive so that that is, you know, those touch points are kind of help people to see. The long stretch is hard sometimes to see. So when there's a stopping point, that helps. So there is a near-perfect or a high-attendance incentive that would be, one day or less would be $200 at first semester, again, second semester. And then for perfect attendance, there is $300 for semester. And then second semester, if-- So I'm going to explain two different things and let me know if you have questions because this is where members have a lot of questions. If there's perfect attendance first semester and second semester, so the whole year, somebody can elect to-- can elect to receive that $300 second semester as well, or they can elect to receive five days in their sick leave bank. If there's not perfect attendance first semester, but there is second semester, then it would just be the $300, those five additional days would not be accessible to them.
So it's kind of like, if you have a year of perfect attendance, you can choose the five days?
Yes, yeah. Or you can choose 300, 300, but then you have another option.
That's kind of a bonus incentive for the full year of perfect attendance. And really, we see these, we'll continue to track the data, we see these as a way to keep our teachers in classrooms with students, and the costs ideally will increase, because more teachers will seek out the incentive, but also simultaneously, we'll see the cost of substitute teachers decline as we are increasing attendance. Do you have anything else?
I don't think so.
Another portion of our agreement, which is not in the teacher agreement, but this would come to the board as a request to change policy, would be changing the sick leave provided from 16 days to 14 days annually, as well as making the change so that a staff member may use up to 14 days for family illness, if their child, you know, or spouse's illness that they needed to be there for. And currently, it's seven days, and we see that as a benefit for our families and our staff. And then, continuing up to three days of that 14 days may be used for approved personal leave. And we also talked about, among the staff, sometimes there is quite a bit of confusion about that, and so, we even had examples where staff members felt they had to use those three days, or they would lose those three days, which was driving up absences. And in those days, if they're not used, they roll over into the accumulated sick leave. So, we talked about better ways of informing people early and often of those things.
Right. They roll over as sick days if they don't use them, they don't roll over as personal days, so they don't have six days the next year, correct?
Correct.
I will add here that we did on our, we gathered feedback before we went into this process, and we gathered feedback from all certified teaching council staff. And their number one goal for this discussion was to remove those labels to where all of it was sick leave and could be used for family if necessary. So, that was a big, that's a big item for our staff in reference.
Also, the duration of this agreement, as you may recall, we had made a three-year agreement for working conditions. Compensation is just a one-year, but we have also put in, we're going to again, look at the attendance data next year and have the conversation again regarding the amount of leave provided. And we anticipate that the attendance will improve, and we'll continue to track that data. Our recommendation, and do you want to speak about the ratification?
Yeah, I can talk about that. So we, members ratified the agreement with over a 92% yes vote. So there were 156 yes votes and 13 no votes total. And so, that was a majority of membership, a majority of membership actually voted yes, not just a majority of voters, so we felt good about that.
So we are respectfully asking the Board of Education to approve the working conditions for the three-year term, which there is an additional two years, and then the compensation for one year as presented, and you'll see the actual agreement in board docs, as well as the salary schedule. We're opening the questions.
So the thing on the leave, that's that part of this, right? That's going to be something that's going to go into our
Correct.
Our policy.
That will go into policy. The policy is in part of the
Even though we're agreeing, even though it's in this, and we're agreeing to it, you still have to come back, and we have to put it in policy.
Absolutely. We're also going to do some work, which we talked about, to kind of be more clear about what we would consider as excessive absenteeism, which are the policy adjustments that will help us be more clear as staff.
When we accepted and presented the working conditions for three years and compensation for one year, is
Second. Dr. Thomas?
You know, it's good to see this group come together and streamline this down to just a few days, a long day.
One day.
We're planning for one day next year also.
I mean, there were times where it was like, are they ever going to get there?
Six days, seven weeks?
Months.
Yes, months.
Months.
And to know that all of our focus is the same. It's rare, and I know one other organization that puts their, puts their money where their mouth is, as it were, to say we do believe that our employees are the greatest asset that we have. I know that man personally moved, he moved out to a company in St. Peters. He's the only other person I've ever met that will follow through with that, believing, not just saying that our employees are our greatest asset. And I'm proud to be a part of this group that is. And with that, Madam President, I would vote in the affirmative, absolutely.
Ms. Lomas?
I will vote yes, definitely.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Belbreko?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez Pimba?
Yes.
I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to 3.03, support staff salary approval, Dr. Michael Chance.
So, board members, I'm also here to present the support staff salary schedule recommendations. I want to begin by, also, just like I just stated with our teaching staff, we couldn't do the work we're doing for kids without our support staff. We all know that an entire school system, school system struggles if we don't have quality custodians, quality food service staff, office professionals. It takes everybody, nurses in the buildings, it takes everybody to come together to support our kids. Again, helping us to reach our vision and mission. A little bit about the process, we reviewed costs of providing each staff member a step on their current schedule, and increased the base on each schedule. We, part of the process is comparisons of St. Louis County, other school districts, to make sure that we're competitive with our salaries. Also, worked towards, I know there's been interest in the board for quite some time, worked towards establishing at least a $15 per hour minimum salary, hourly wage, for our lowest paid work groups. And that was really to ensure consistent overall increases among all the other groups is part of that, too. So, in line with the teacher 5%, we worked to provide at least 5% to all the other work groups and the support staff while seeking that $15 an hour for our lowest paid. We shared the recommendations with the support staff advisory committee yesterday and saw their feedback as well. Tonight, you'll see, and in board docs you'll see, that the recommendation is providing a step for each support staff employee where a step is possible, and where there was not, we're working to add additional steps, towards 20 to 25 steps, just like our teacher salary schedule. And then, again, increasing the starting salary of our food service, custodial, and our early childhood teacher aid work groups to at least $15 per hour, which is a goal that we've met. And with that, also increasing, as I just said, the overall schedules of all other work groups to at least a 5% increase overall in the schedule. So, to go by work group, looking at our bus drivers, this year, the recommendation is a 5% increase. The range within that schedule is a 4.5 to 6.5, depending upon where the employee is in that schedule. Last year was 4.31%. Child nutrition, this is where we strategically increased the base to at least $15 for work group A, which are cook helpers, currently making 1060 an hour. Work group B, which are our cooks, is 1645 an hour. And our kitchen managers, well now, the starting base would be 1931 per hour, with an overall increase of 31.34%. And you can see that range is from 22 to 44.8% for that work group. And we believe this will help us, you know, she was very excited about this yesterday, this ability, and she's been advocating all year, because this will help us be competitive with local restaurants that are really working to recruit quality staff members also.
And the other important part about that, Mike, is that these, this group, these groups, A and B, they work less than eight hours, and they have no benefits.
Absolutely. A and B are not full-time staff, so you can imagine working, and these are often family members right in our community, working less than full-time without benefits, and at the previous wage, would be very challenging. We definitely want to work to keep these employees with us. I believe this will do that. Our warehouse schedule change is a 5.03% increase, and that range is 4.7 to 5.4 on that salary schedule. The custodial change is group B, which are evening custodians, changing that from 1260 an hour to a base of 15. That overall change is around 20% to 21% on that schedule. And group C, 1522 to 1575 for the base, and that's 4.3 to 5.9. Overall, 11.13%. It ranges from 4.3 to 21.8, depending upon where you're at on those schedules. Looking at our maintenance schedule, a 5.01% and again, a range from 4.4 to 5.7 for that schedule. Our nurses' recommendation is a 5% increase, with a range of 4.2 to 5.3. And then, office professional schedules, you can see the overall average is a 5% increase. And you'll see that group D is a 7.95% increase, and that's really because part of the recommendation, we have a staff member in group B that you'll actually see on the personnel report, a status change to group D based on the work that they have been doing, which increased that to 7.9%. And then, it still maintains 5% overall for the whole group, and the range is 3.8 to 6.2% for office professionals. Early childhood teachers aides, group A, starting at 1091, will now go to $15 an hour base. And this group A, sometimes are part-time, staff members as well, or they're a full, we have someone in this situation, they're a full-time staff member but has not achieved the 60 credit hours yet, but is working towards that. If they're full-time and they achieve the 60 credit hours, then we move them to group B as a full-time person, if they're a full-time employee. And the full-time As, starting base would be 1674, total increase of 27% and the range from 18.7 to 38.5% for that group. Adult education, an average of 5.04% with a range of 4.9 to 5.2, and that's actually a very small group of employees, which is why their range is so tight, it's a small group. And this group is funded through a grant, so we'll continue to look for ways to address their salary needs as we look to see what we can do with the grant. Overall increases, in this summary slide, you can see for, really range from 5.0, which was our goal, to be consistent with at least a minimum of a 5% increase, and it ranges all the way to a 31, 34% for child nutrition. And the total, then, for all of the groups is 8 and 3/4% for all of those groups. And that does include a step for each staff member, unless around the top step, and there's nowhere to go. Are there any questions I can answer?
I should say, this is a good step forward, taking care of our neighbors and our friends and people, a lot of these people live here in our neighborhoods. And, yeah, it was pointed out that some of them don't even get benefits for the job, so it's good to compensate them to make sure that they're here for our kids, and that's what it's about, making sure that here, every day, so our kids have the good clean bathrooms and restrooms and cafeteria, the food, classes and everything that's supposed to be.
And the custodial one is just our employees, not the
Correct.
WSB. And, you know, serving on this committee for a long time, we used to have the real problem of people coming in, being our cooks and nutrition, using up their days we gave them, and then high-tailing it out of here. Hopefully, this will stop that. And I did ask at the end of the meeting, you know, what they thought of it, and Linda Person was one person, office professional, and she spoke up and said, she's very, she knows that the office professionals appreciate the raise that Rittner gives, and they're very appreciative, that, they know other districts don't give anything. And I know Deanna Hill, Mike Smith, and Ted all spoke up, too, and so, they're all excited about this, so it's all good.
Ruth, I want to thank you for being a part of that group, too, because I think that they appreciate you being here, so they can speak to our
Yeah. Happy to do it.
Madam President, it would be an honor to move that we approve the support staff salary schedules and recommendations for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented this evening.
Second.
All right. Ms. Enriquez Pimba?
Yes.
Ms. Belbreko?
Absolutely.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Stigard?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Moving to 3.04, E-Rate proposal, Dr. Fred Harland, Director of Technology.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm here again this week, following up on my recommendation from last week, asking for your approval for a recommendation, a proposal for Cisco switches from worldwide technology totaling $29,031.30. And also for your approval for my recommendation to contract with Intervision for the implementation of those switches, the network upgrade, at a total cost of $8,003.
I think the savings is probably more than what the cost is, aren't they, Fred?
Yes.
I mean, it's celebrating, not just a good cost, but look at the savings that we're getting out of this, isn't that like
85%.
85% of this. I mean, you know, where can you get a bargain like that nowadays?
E-Rate.
Yeah, exactly, that's where you get it.
Well, you know, Fred, while I just moved that we approved WWT's proposal for Cisco switches totaling $29,031.30, as you presented tonight.
Second.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Stigard?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez Pimba?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
And while you're here, Dr. Harland, I move that we approve Intervision's cost of implementation of switches totaling $8,003, as you presented this night.
Second.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Stigard?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez Pimba?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
And this is just the first year. There's going to be three years total.
Yes, current.
Thank you. So we get to see you again for three years.
Moving to 3.05, custodial contract proposal, Mr. Michael Smith and Mr. Dwight McPherson.
Good evening.
As you know, we'll maintain facilities to help to meet our mission and vision. And facilities should provide the best physical environment for learning to occur. All district schools should provide consistent and equitable All district schools should provide consistent and equitable envi, environments for working. We entered into a, our current agreement with WFF, which is now HES, in two thousand seventeen, and we are completing our fifth year of the agreement this year. HES has fifty-four employees, and they provide cleaning and the school's special project cleaning and other duties as assigned. Overall cleanliness, we know, is not up to the standard that we expect. The nation's labor shortage is adversely affecting the industry, and when, we all know that better staffing leads to better cleaning. We introduced a hybrid system with Rittner coordinators at night. That's a new process and still working out some kinks moving forward. Moving to stop the blame game from between Rittner and HES, and also lacking in Rittner evening supervisor also presents a challenge. And so we have completed meetings in order to bring the groups together and to stop that blame game. We have also met with the Rittner coordinators to make sure that they're fully aware of their duties and responsibilities. The starting hourly wage for HES employees increased in January, and HES has delivered proposals for, for an extension, higher wage rates aiming to attract and retain talent. Last year's agreement had a starting wage of ten dollars and thirty cents, and you can see the cost to Rittner at that time was one-hundred-thirty-four thousand, nine-hundred-seven dollars a month. In January, we increased to one-hundred-thirty-nine dollars, one-hundred-thirty-nine thousand, thirty dollars a month. And HES cannot recruit talent at below starting wage. And so an increase to wages should be considered in order to increase that level of service. Some considerations, I'm sorry, I want to go back just a little bit. Last week, in the meeting, in the work session, there were some questions that were asked around paybacks or credits as far as staffing goes. And so we, Dwight and I will be ensuring that there is language written into the new agreement, that adjustments will be made on a quarterly basis based upon staffing. Also, over, another question was asked over the years that I have been in this position, what I have received for the district around a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in credits up to this point. So some considerations for you would be in April, to increase the starting wage for HES employees to thirteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. That cost to Rittner a month would be one-hundred-fifty-five thousand, eight-hundred-forty-eight dollars a month. Also, another consideration would be to provide a one-year extension with HES, knowing that they have a limited time to prove that improvements can be made. We believe that a starting wage of fifteen dollars an hour will give them the opportunity to attract and retain talent in order to meet our expectations. The cost to Rittner then would be two million, sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-forty-eight dollars a year. Now with that increase, that is not an increase to overhead and profit, that increase is wages and a four-hundred-dollar-a-month increase for supplies. Another important consideration would be to add an evening Rittner custodial supervisor because there's no real oversight over the buildings in the evening for, with a Rittner employee person. Therefore, I'm making two recommendations. Number one, that the board increase the monthly cost for custodial services provided by HES to one-hundred-fifty-five thousand, eight-hundred-forty-eight dollars per month, providing a thirteen-fifty starting wage. And second, it's recommended that the Board of Education extend the agreement with HES through the twenty-two, twenty-three school year at an annual cost of two million, sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-forty-eight dollars. And of course, if you have questions.
The bottom recommendation, is that worth a fifteen-dollar-an-hour space?
Yes, sir, it is. Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. It'd be nice if it was in there because that would, we can reiterate the fact that we're, we want to go that way.
You can add that when you make your motion.
I could.
You could.
That's a little help for my friend. So then, why don't we just start with this? I move that we recommend that the Board of Education increase the monthly cost for custodial services provided by HES to one-hundred-fifty-five thousand, eight-hundred-forty-eight dollars per month, providing a thirteen-dollar-and-fifty-cent starting wage.
Second.
Ms. Enrique Splumba?
Yes.
Ms. Belgraco?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Stigardt?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Now, the second one, we recommend that the Board of Education extend the agreement with HES through the two thousand, twenty-two, two thousand, twenty-three school year, providing a fifteen-dollar-an-hour starting wage at an annual cost of two million, sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-forty-eight dollars.
Second. Dr. Thomas?
I love saying that fifteen-dollar-an-hour wage, I love that. I think that's, that's great for our people, that's great for our school district. Yes, ma'am, please.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Stigardt?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Belgraco?
Yes.
Ms. Enrique Splumba?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
I'd just like to say something before you guys go.
Yeah.
We talked at great length about this last week at the workshop, and sometimes people don't realize that outside of here, but we talked at great length about the poor service. We talked about credits because our contract says they're going to provide so many employees, and when they don't, we will get credits. And we also talked about the importance of having a Rittner manager in the night to relieve Mark who's doing it right now, but also because that's well-needed. And we do understand as a board, the service we're getting is not what it should be, but we're hoping that with the checklist and other changes we've made, that this will be an improvement, and it's only for one year. So I just want people to know that.
And as Mike pointed out, we've had very frank conversations with the management at HES. They know basically they have until December to show marked improvement or will go in another direction.
Is there a timetable for the, the recommendation for evening supervisor?
Not at this point. The goal was to make this recommendation first. We'd be working, having more conversation about the timeline on that, and I could come back and speak to the board with some clarity about that. My, my goal, or at least my thinking would be, is that we were working to be onboarding that person quickly so that we can improve services for this project.
Sooner than later.
But we haven't set a specific date for that.
With the number of students that we're going to be having in for their summer school, they'll have the same amount of people there?
Right. If they can attract, if they can attract people and, and get fully set, yes. Otherwise, they make it up with other hours, as Mike has discussed, you know, the Blue Crew, which are temporary people, and daytime custodians stay over. But we know that none of that is as effective as having a whole new second shift of people here.
Right. Okay.
And if we can get it posted and get interviews done quick enough, we'd love to bring the recommendation on April fourteenth.
Do it.
So that's our, that's our goal.
We'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to three-point-oh-six, personnel recommendations, Dr. Michael Chance.
Board members, I'm here to present items one through twenty-six. Open for any questions or comments you may have.
I have a few. So I noticed there's several on here for the high school, and a couple of them are new positions and some are vacant. Are they vacant right now, or is it just for the next year? I'm particularly looking at thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
So it's not vacant right now. We can't see that was, some of those are staff members who've notified us early of a separation.
Uh-huh. But what about fourteen and fifteen where it says new position? So would they be hired right away or no?
No. Yeah, fourteen and fifteen are hired right away. They are, let me take that back, I'm sorry. Fourteen is starting right away. That was part of the recommendation from Dr. Green for additional support.
Right, the five, uh-huh, right, gotcha.
And then number fifteen, we initially tried to hire to start right away for, that was also part of that proposal, and we were not able to find someone who wasn't already in a contract. So we reposted to start next school year for that position.
Yeah, position is to start to next school year, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Mike, on the, on the separations, pursuing another opportunity, does that mean they're just, they're going to stay in the field and just look at other places to be, or?
Yes, yes. Some have accepted positions in other places, other districts. So typically, we, I'll try to put leading the profession, they're choosing something out of education.
So is there a common thread for all these going somewhere else's, or?
Um, I will say that typically, this time of year, we would be bringing potential non-renewals to the board, and sometimes people will select to separate on their own terms as opposed to being non-renewal. So that would be the common thread.
Okay.
So with number twenty and that status change, will that create a vacancy in the current role?
Yes. So we have positions posted. We had a position posted already for that role, for number twenty, that actually, and we had it posted already because we had tried to fill a position late in the hiring season with an additional person in that role. So we've recently reposted, and then also then the collection of applicants we've had will also, will be able to pull to fill that position as well. We'll see, twenty-two is what I was referring to in the.
Number twenty-one, does, does that position answer to the principal there?
Yes. And he, again, has been in the interim role this year, and so the position was posted, multiple applicants were interviewed and selected for that position.
That's never very good things.
So we have three science vacancies at the high school?
Yes, and we filled, we filled each of them, yes.
Yeah.
Suppleck, we can afford these teachers.
We were fortunate in doing that. They're hard positions to fill.
Yeah.
Now we're working, we'll work to fill a middle school science position.
Really?
Say it again. I said one of them just retired, retired, she's retired. She's retired.
She said that someone, she was talking about someone she knows who's retired. A teacher who's retired. Science, right? Yes.
Science was one of those hard ones to fill?
Absolutely. Very hard to fill. We are, we were, I feel like we were fortunate that they notified us early, so we could post early, interview, hire early. Previous time, previous years, we're hiring people in, in July, still looking for people in those positions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve personnel recommendations, one through twenty-six as presented.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-four.
Oh, hold on, I mean, no, no, I just didn't go down far enough, my mistake, sorry.
Second. Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Stigardt?
Yes.
Ms. Belgraco?
Yes.
Ms. Enrique Splumba?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to three-point-oh-seven, student representative appointment.
So, board members, we went through the process last week to identify the next student representative to the Board of Education. We'll be thanking Janaya for her year of service on April fourteenth, the next time that we're together. Janaya will be transitioning off and getting ready to graduate and move, move on to Benedictine College next year. Following your work last week, board members, Dr. Alvin Wilson and I made our way to Rittner High School Friday morning to meet with Terrence Clark personally, to inform him that he was selected by the Board of Education. Terrence was absolutely thrilled and honored. So tonight, there's a recommendation that's coming to you to formally appoint Terrence E. Clark III as the student representative to the Board of Education. Mr. Clark was not able to be here with us tonight, but he will absolutely be there on the fourteenth of April to be sat.
Salute.
Second. Ms. Enrique Splumba?
Yes.
Ms. Belgraco?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Stigardt?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you, board members.
Moving to three-point, vote eight, board member comments. Does anybody have anything they wish to share?
I thought our trip on Monday to Jeff City was excellent. The whole program was good. And I meant to tell the middle school about the book that we got that, about the eleven senators.
Senators.
Senators who are female, and then only thirty-six in the whole history of Missouri have been female, so that's like one-third current, current in the position. It's great to see all of our representatives and senators in person, with the exception of Miss Kevin, but it's, is very, I think, very productive. And the good thing about doing it is that I think they're aboard with our, with what our concerns are. The bad part is the other ones that aren't, aren't, the ones that aren't in line with what we want, they're not our preps. So, yeah.
I told you we should start knocking on their doors.
Yeah, yeah. So I did have sat in a meeting with one of the, I think it was on the advocacy committee, and I introduced myself and said, I was from right there, and she said, oh, yeah, I've gone to a couple of your sessions, annual ones on growing your own. And she said they're starting to do that, and I told her that, you know, it's expanding now, that other colleges are wanting us to join in, so I thought it was, it was very good, good, well-daised, but.
Yeah, and I hope we take some of the feedback about the time, the meeting times, because it'd be great if we can make a meeting time.
Our own meetings you're talking about.
Yeah, our LAC meetings. So that.
I was thinking that when he said it was at seven-thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, more so for, so that they can come, so we've got, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's changing, board members, so my plan is on next Friday morning to ask the committee what they refer, as we're planning for next year, maybe moving to a lunch meeting, and see if the committee supports that.
Yeah, lunch is always good.
So I attended a workshop this morning, which I can present at the next meeting, or, I don't know, I can just pass on the notes and the slide deck, but it was about how to create equitable policy using data. It was a program through the, I thought it was MSBA, like MSBA, and it was. It was a program through the, I thought it was MSBA, like MSBA, and it was Minnesota SBA, but whatever, it was great. But anyway, I just found it super helpful on, you know, how to create, how to look at policy, and they had some really great best practices and questions to ask yourself when you're looking at data, and how to make a more informed, not just a decision, but how to, you know, when we get all these presentations on data, and the types of questions that we should be having ourselves as board members to ensure that it is an equitable policy, but also that this is something that's gonna work, as they kept saying, like widening the scope, you know, to ensure that all students can kind of fall into those policies. So anyway, I found it super informational, and I will pass on the slide deck and some takeaways that I think we could start to operationalize maybe when we look at data.
I'd like to thank everybody that went up to Jefferson City. It was a sacrifice of a complete day, a lot of time, but I think it paid dividends. Yeah, I mean, you guys talk to everybody that is already on board with us and everything, but that just reiterates to them that the support they have here at home, and that gives them then the energy again to go out and fight the good fight. And I think that's what that day was about. You guys, you told them, "We're here for you, this is where we need to be." I appreciate everybody that went up there and did that. Dr. Kilbride, you and group up there, and Alice, those just people, we had everything keep it going, okay? We have to keep doing that. Reading more and more about the group of ladies senators and House representatives, they're coming together more and more across the aisle to work together because they have at least recognized that the male knuckleheads up there cannot get along and do anything, so I think they're going to take the lead, get a lot of things done, it's gotta look big, okay? Compromise has to work in there some way, and right now, it's a dirty work, but I think they can bring that out in the group, and I look forward to seeing what they can do. We gotta keep sending the messages up there as these other bills come up. You read the updates from MSBA and from Chris and everything, that was a great day, it was a great day, I think, for Rittner, I appreciate everybody going there.
I'm always impressed every time we go up, because it may not be that we spend 30 minutes with them, it may be 15 minutes with them, but it's 15 minutes of well-spent, they're educated, they ask us decisive questions, they truly do want to know what we think, and I think that's one of the most important things, that I always come back from that. It's always time well-spent talking with everybody up there, and I was very impressed with the 11 senators as well, with the fact that they were working on a literacy household, getting things passed, and specifically worked. Which I think is really important. It did, and dyslexia, I think, which is wonderful to see that happening. So yeah, no, it was definitely time well-spent, absolutely. Does anybody have anything else to share?
The other thing that came to mind was I saw the future of our leadership at the high school here in Manhattan, I think we all did, lined up over here from the middle school, I think they're gonna have a great transition right up to filling some of our seniors vacancies as they move on, and I think we can say that the high school, as far as the student levels, will be in very good shape.
I think we should thank Dr. Kilbride, because he's really the one who keeps up with all of our representatives and does a good job, and they definitely know to call him when they need information. I mean, we're all behind you, of course, and you do a great job keeping us informed, but you're really the one who gets that there.
I appreciate that. I actually got texted twice during this meeting from Representative Proudey.
Oh, did you?
Thanks for the support.
Good.
And it's great also that you are building relationships with Senator Shute, Senator Williams, Representative Proudey, Representative Lindo, and because of the connections they're building with you, they're much more visible in the community, they're much more visible in our meetings, so just building good relationships.
All right, now we will move to the Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items 4.01 through 4.08 as presented.
Second?
Ms. Glover Jones?
So before I approve this, I do want to, I do just want to bring attention to the Alternative Ed program. I'm hoping that with some of the transition that we have going on over there, that some of the areas where it was below expectation, that we are, we'll start to see some gains there, even in the developing section. One, a couple of things that stood out to me was the GPA, when we look at that for Alternative Ed, that's a major concern there, but most definitely want to keep that on the radar for our Husky Academy, but I vote yes.
Okay. Ms. Lonas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Belbreko?
Yeah, and I'd just like to say that the policy edits we all discussed and went through those, you know, just to say that. It's not just a blank chart. Yes, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Ms. Enriquez Pampa?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Close session?
I'd like to motion to reconvene in closed session, first date stat sheet 610-021, for the purpose of a discussion of personal agenda items.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Lonas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Belbreko?
Sure.
Ms. Enriquez Pampa?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, and I say we need about a 10-minute recess.